Live in five, four, three.
We'll call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you do the roll call, please.
McEvers?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Gookin?
Over here.
Miller?
Here.
English?
Here.
If we'd rise for our invocation, we have Pastor Mike Slothauer with the River of Life Friends Church.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. Please pray with me. Father in heaven, we love you. We thank you for the beautiful place that we get to live. We thank you that you've kept our cases to a minimum. We thank you that your word says that you put a protection over us. I pray for each business. I pray for wisdom for our city council members tonight. And we just thank you that you are our ever-present help in times of trouble. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Woody, lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this has been, this agenda has been a challenge for Renata, so we have a couple of things to change. First of all, Council Bill Number 20-1005, the heavy equipment parking and storage on residential properties has been removed from the agenda and will be brought forward at a later date. And then we do have an item that we need council action on to add to the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to amend the agenda to correct other business item number six, Resolution 20033, approving an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Policy for the Emergency Minor Home Repair Program. Grants up to $20,000 for sewer lateral repair or conversion from a failed septic system with signature authority for the community planning director and/or the finance director. It is not titled correctly on the amendment previously posted.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Move on to public comment. Renata, do we have anyone out there that's waving at us that would like to give public comment?
That would actually be Brandon in the booth.
Brandon in the booth. Anyone waving at us for public comment?
No public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Move on to presentations. Our first presentation is a COVID-19 update. Scott Dietrich with the Fire Department is with us tonight. Welcome, Scott.
Welcome. Can you join me?
We can.
Yeah, I'm gonna share my standpoint here for the power point here. Okay, Mayor and council members, just thanks for your time tonight. Just wanted to give you guys a kind of quick update of where we are in the city with the COVID-19 pandemic. To begin with, I'm just gonna give you some statistics, just so you know, these statistics are from last Thursday, May 14. So in the five northern counties, Health District Number One, we've had a total of 68 confirmed COVID cases. And I'm glad to report, out of those, we've had zero deaths. Of those 68 cases, the Health District is no longer monitoring 65 of them. And out of the total of 68, we were fortunate that only seven of them required hospitalization. Just kind of to compare some other numbers, I just crossed the state line in Spokane County, they had 394 cases with 30 deaths. And then as of Thursday, the United States had 1,365,061 cases with 82,246 deaths. Worldwide, we're up to 4,170,424 cases with 287,390 deaths. Now, all of those numbers have probably changed a little bit since Thursday, but here in the county, we haven't seen any drastic changes since then. So what everybody kind of wants to know with this COVID-19 pandemic is the forecasting, what are we gonna see in the future? I wish I had a crystal ball and I wish I could tell you exactly what we were gonna see, but unfortunately, nobody knows 100% for sure. Based off of information I gathered from the American Medical Association, they are anticipating to see a decrease in the COVID-19 cases this summer, as with other diseases. But what they warn is they do not anticipate as significant of a drop-off with COVID as you typically see with things like a flu pandemic. They're just, a lot of the stuff, they're not sure with this one, also has to do with how the states and cities are decreasing their restrictions. With those changes, we're kind of in limbo, we're not quite sure what the numbers are gonna do, but we do anticipate to see a little bit of a spike just with that. The American Medical Association does predict a 75% chance of a second wave hitting this fall. We're kind of basing that off of past pandemics, such as the pandemics in 1918 as well as 1957. What we don't know what that second wave is, what it's going to look like. With past pandemics, sometimes the second wave is less than the initial, other times it's fairly comparable, and there have been cases where the second wave was actually more severe than the first. So with that being said, kind of my recommendations that we need to do here in the city of Coeur d'Alene is prepare for the worst-case scenario, but pray for the best. But we do need to think about and prepare for a significant second wave this fall. You say that the COVID-19 pandemic that we're seeing right now most closely compares with the 1957 influenza pandemic, and just comparing those two pandemics and those numbers, they're predicting by the end of this that COVID-19 could kill 250,000 people here in that state. So locally, what have we done for this COVID-19 pandemic? Well, one of the things we did initially from a fire and EMS perspective is opened up a multi-agency coordination group, or a MAC group. This was a group made up of agents of all the fire and EMS agencies in Coeur d'Alene, and the goal with this group was to kind of all unite and create one unified response to the COVID-19. So we were all doing the same thing, and we were all doing what was the latest recommendation for responding to the COVID-19 outbreak. As a member of the MAC group, I was tasked with authoring the medical operations plan for the group. What the medical operations plan was, was kind of a guideline for multiple things. It was how we were gonna keep our providers safe from exposure to patients with COVID-19, making sure that they had the appropriate PPE and were wearing what was gonna keep them the most protected. Also included things like self-checking themselves when they came to work to make sure that they didn't have a fever or other symptoms where they were gonna expose their coworkers. We implemented things such as wearing masks at work at the fire station and making sure that when they're sleeping at night, that they were sleeping in different rooms just to separate themselves from the coworkers. We also had decided to close off our fire stations to the public, including the meeting rooms, just all as precautionary measures to keep them, to assure that our providers were safe. I was also asked to help or author the infectious disease plan with the MAC group, and what this plan was, it was an outline of the different levels of exposures that our providers had to COVID-19. And based off of the exposure level and the PPE that they were wearing, and this included fire EMS as law of law enforcement, based off of those exposures, would determine whether we need to quarantine an individual, isolate an individual, get follow-up testing on them or the patients that they were exposed to. And with that, I worked very closely with Coeur d'Alene Health and the Health District and Dr. Gimmon. We would track potential patients with COVID-19, and we needed to get rapid testing results from them. And we would also assure that our personnel were quarantined if needed, isolated if needed, and assured that they got tested when indicated. So what are the next steps here in Coeur d'Alene? Right off the bat, I am planning to meet with all the city department heads, we'd like to do that within the next few weeks, I want to get a better understanding of how COVID-19 affected them, their departments, and their personnel. Based off of the information I gather from those meetings, as well as information from the CDC and other sources, I will begin drafting a citywide infectious disease plan that will cover safety precautions for all city departments as it relates to infectious disease, as well as look at areas where we're deficient, we may need to make some changes to like structural facilities or personal protective equipment or other measures. And I will look at funds available through the CARES Act as well as other FEMA funds available to help offset the cost of those discovered deficiencies. That was just kind of a quick presentation, kind of giving you a kind of update where we're at, but I will be glad to answer any questions if you need to make out.
Council, questions for Scott? Dan, did you have something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Scott. I really appreciate that you're doing this. You won an award, didn't you recently, or weren't you recognized for something outstanding you did?
Yeah, I got EMS Provider of the Year for the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association.
Well, awesome. You're a hell of a guy.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can answer this or not, because I don't know what your expertise is, and I don't have any expertise, but you talked about the second wave.
Yes.
You mentioned 1918, you mentioned 1957, and that was the influenza virus. This is the coronavirus.
Right.
Has there ever been a second wave of a coronavirus?
Yes, never. There have been second waves of coronaviruses, yes, but I couldn't give you the exact numbers on those. I would have to do research and get back to you on that, but they have seen reprints of coronavirus.
Okay, yeah, send me an email or something to get back to me. Thank you.
I'll be glad to do it.
Other questions for Scott? Anyone? Council? Scott, just one question is that I know that the financial picture is something that you're going to be working on with the grant funding.
Mm-hmm.
Are you aware of the amount of grant funding that the city of Coeur d'Alene has been awarded?
I don't have an exact figure on that, no. So, yeah, I would have to research to get the exact figure.
Yeah, because I know that the governor had a certain amount of funds that he was gonna allocate out to the counties and municipalities. And you will be working with the finance department to make sure that all the expenditures that we've spent so far, we're gonna get reimbursed for, and I know that we're going to have some expenditures for, like you said, planning for the future, we're gonna have some expenses there as well. And I know that we have had a number of expenses related to this, so that's kind of the purpose of these grants, these grant funds.
Right. Yeah, I had hoped to have more of that research done this last week, preparing for this, but I ended up actually being sick all this last week with COVID symptoms and got tested myself. Luckily, I was negative, but I've been in bed sick most of the week. So I will be researching more the funding available through the CARES Act and the federal government, and the regulations and stuff associated with all that, and working with the department heads to make sure that we're getting what we need and that we're getting the funding.
Right. Appreciate it, Scott. Thank you for all the work you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So we'll move on. Next presentation is Troy has a financial review for us. Troy?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are in the midst of the budget with the city of Coeur d'Alene, and as Scott did an excellent job, COVID-19 has changed our world. We will bring to you in June a get-together, a workshop, to go through many of these details. Let me give you an overview of what we're looking at at this time. We are meeting with each and every one of the departments and going through their proposed budget. You will see where the budget began, you will see any modifications to the budget, and get that on June 8th. When I look to experts in the field, those being economists, Reuters did a little survey of 50 economists. This was the range that they forecast, the world economy. Some predict it'll shrink as much as 6%, others say that it will grow by 7 tenths of a percent, and the average was a 1.2% contraction. So with that, we can anticipate less revenue than we have. This has been an amazing economic change in the fact that our economy was pretty much flourishing at about 100%. We had unemployment at 3% or less. We could have unemployment in the neighborhood of 20% to 25% as this has changed our world. In so doing, let me give you a macro look quickly at our financial plan. The city of Coeur d'Alene's budget is about $97 million. Our enterprise funds compose about $44 million of that, or 45%. The general fund in the library makes up another $44.5 million, or about 46%. And you are stewards of perpetual care funds, impact fees, and other fiduciary funds, which make up about 9%. In our business, the city of Coeur d'Alene receives property taxes. And the property taxes we receive is about $23 million. And they go to fund our general fund, our library, and they are used to pay for debt service that your voters approved. That makes up about 51% of our income into the general fund and the library from our property taxes. We anticipate property taxes to be solid, meaning that we will get nearly what it is that we ask for, because many, many, many escrows are out there and collect the property taxes. So we're not anticipating a big decrease in our property tax revenue. The challenge for us in this financial plan will be in the general fund. Our general fund is 83% personnel expense. So you probably will not see many new positions coming forward, because we won't be able to fund them, because I'm proposing a decrease in income and not a lot of other revenues to come in. The city has always been very frugal on its capital purchases. Last year's budget was just 2% of your total general fund in capital, and the remainder about 15% in services and supplies. So as we did during the Great Recession, we looked at capital items to go away, limit services and supplies, and do our best not to grow any of the personnel. So what I have in front of you today is a drill down on a couple of line items that are very important to the city of Coeur d'Alene. In front of you today is categories that compose $10 million of revenue to the city of Coeur d'Alene, including highway user fees, revenue sharing, liquor tax, highway district funds, and building permits. What we did for our purposes here today was took a look at what if things moved down 10%, 15%, or 20% the remainder of this year. If we decline 10%, the city will be down about $524,000 in income, as in this category right here. If we move that up to 15%, that would be for this fiscal year, $787,000 decrease. And if we did not come back or rebound at all after COVID, we would be down $1 million in cash flow for this fiscal year. I'm thinking out loud with you that we will probably lean towards the middle of the 10, the 15, and the 20, or right at the 15%, but we will know more as we move forward. Again, that is just for this fiscal year. So if we go forward and look at a change, if we take next fiscal year and put a 10% decline just to these revenue streams, a 15% decline and a 20% decline at 15%, $1,500,000 in revenue difference year over year. So I bring this forward as news, not really good news, however, it is a look at the revenues in a way that you will be looking at. So with this information, I'm not bringing you a whole lot of good news, other than we will do our best to bring you a very, very simple financial plan. It will most likely not cash flow at all, and we will bring forward options for you to look at as we bring this to you in June. We'll be together in July, and we can bring you updates at your council meetings as well. Again, this is a $10 million area in our revenue stream to the general fund, that's about 22%. So I gave you about a quarter of our revenue stream here. This does not take into consideration impacts to your enterprise funds. There was an article in the newspaper that talked about parking. Parking was down 49% year over year, because parking revenue basically stopped in the month of April. We're looking for better times on that particular revenue fund. So an enterprise fund like wastewater, its revenue is down as well, because businesses have not been open. Water department is probably not down quite as much. But you are looking at the same situation I am. The economists aren't sure what's going to happen. The good news is what Scott shared with us, that we don't have a lot of very, very ill people or anyone that's lost their life due to this. So the good news, Mayor and Council, is that you have been excellent stewards of your tax dollars. You do have a savings account. I am not coming forward asking to borrow money to cover your overhead, and your enterprise funds have cash on hand. So obviously, at this time, I would call it a rainy day, and we might have to go to that particular fund to look at balancing up this upcoming financial plan, and I hope we come back out of this quicker than 20% decline or even a 15% decline. So it's just an update. It's looking into that crystal ball and setting up what you've already been thinking about as we bring forward a financial plan for the fiscal year 2021. I would stand for any questions?
Any questions for Troy? Council? Kiki?
Troy, do you expect that when we get together in June, any of these numbers will be more firm than they are now?
I do not. We are that late into May. We are working with Association of Idaho Cities on forecasts. We won't have any better quarterly reporting. If I'm forecasting liquor tax, I think that one isn't going to be a big decline. Franchise fees is a good one to look at. Will people back off some of their cable and things like that? A bulk of the franchise fees comes from cold winters. So if you can tell me what the winter will be next year, I can help forecast what that franchise fee will be. So I won't have, I won't have any more solid revenue numbers, have solid expense numbers for you.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Troy, is anything coming from Uncle Spud to help us out?
Most, most of those expenses would be used, most of those incomes would be used to offset expenses that we've incurred, what Scott was speaking to on measures that we've done to help prevent COVID, to help keep our people safe, help keep the public safe. So we will probably not have added revenue other than to offset expenses.
So the state's not giving us grant opportunities or anything supplemental income or anything coming from the state?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
You bet. Kristi?
Mr. Mayor, Troy, has the city ever delayed adopting their budget till you have more solid numbers, or is that, do you just go back and amend? How do you normally do that?
Yeah, we're not able to delay based on the property tax and the way the code's written. We would amend. Any additional income that comes in, you have the authority through an amendment to then spend.
Can you adopt, can you, and I'm asking this out loud because of other entities I'm with, can you adopt part of the, like make the property tax decision or such, and then adopt the rest of the budget later?
We would not prefer to do that, because we want to show a balanced budget based on what we know. The art in that would be, Mr. Mayor, if I may take a liberty, you could do a $110 million budget right now. The big question is what is the property taxes? We could set it that high. So if I was setting the high watermark, we could go that big and then figure out those details later. The big question that needs to be answered is what is the property taxes going to be? So that's about how far this has come, because it's all driven by the property tax question. So I give that to you in a very simple format, because we do set the high watermark. 110's a good number, and we'll be under that for sure. And the details will come through all of the work that we do, and then the big question will be what are property taxes?
Okay, thank you.
To add to that, Kristi, we can always amend. Let's say that we go with the middle, with the 15% decline, and it's not a 15% decline, it's 7.5%. But there was a position that we would have really liked to have put in, but we didn't. Council always has the opportunity to amend the budget if the revenue stream is a lot better, to add back certain things. So I think that we would set the budget, but always have the ability to amend through the year based upon any variances in revenue.
Okay, thank you.
And you, Dan?
Well, just a couple of comments on the liquor tax. I think, you know, from what I've read just recently from some of the state data, for a lot of reasons, actually, they expect that to be significantly up, not just holding low. So, and certainly by June 8th, I think can probably nail down some of that. Also, you know, as we've seen now, a lot of what we're operating on is federal, you know, acts that have come through, and there are multiple future acts, you know, variations under consideration. So in terms of, you know, I fully expect that, oh yeah, we'll be back to amend the budget to include some of those next steps. So, you know, on one hand, I think some of that's hopeful. On the other hand, yeah, there's much more, you know, uncertainty, but you just gotta do your best shot and keep going, so.
Dan, just to add to that, AIC does track, has tracked so far the liquor tax, and I believe that the numbers on there of $1,227, our budget for this year is a little bit higher than that. And then we're actually, according to AIC's projections, on track to hit our budgeted number this year. So maybe they're being a little bit conservative by saying that it's just flat.
I'm still hopeful.
Any other questions for Troy? All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, open meeting law, and Mike Gridley's with us.
Keeping our reputation as must-see TV, we'll go from budget numbers to legal lecture, so try and stay awake with me. This has come up and is brought to you, and we're able to do this, it's because of our cleverness of our city clerk, Renata McLeod, and our IT department. One of the questions that's come up has been, how do you have a public meeting when the public can't come in to the meeting? And through the magic of the internet, which you explained to me earlier, we're able to do this, and Zoom, so hopefully, everybody is able to participate to the extent they want to in our meetings. So, public meeting, open meeting law in Idaho is governed by Title 74, Chapter 2, and that's under, Title 74 is ethics in government, but includes open meetings. And at the beginning of that, it states the policy and why the legislature has adopted this set of laws, and it is the policy of the state that the formation of public policy is public business and shall not be conducted in secret. You know, I don't think we've ever had a complaint here. I think everybody tries to do the best they can and keep everything open to the public as much as they want to participate. You know, in addition to thanking Renata and her crew, I had the opportunity to visit with Deputy City, Deputy Idaho Attorney General Brian Kane, who's always been a good resource for city attorneys, and then Jerry Mason, who's a local lawyer, but is also counsel for the Association of Idaho Cities and our insurance company, ICRIM. And then Randy Adams in my office is always very helpful in doing anything. So let me jump in here. So I thought, well, let's work through some of these laws that are a little bit dry in the abstract. So what do we have here? We have a gathering. It's a gathering of people. Mayor may not be council members, you know, I counted 10, so it could be mayor, council, city attorney, city... You know, I counted ten, so it could be mayor, council, city attorney, city administrator, and Renata. I thought I saw Troy in that one mask. But anyway, the first question is, this is a gathering, but is it a public meeting? Or is it subject to the open meeting laws? And that's, you would then have to ask, well, who's at the meeting? And if you have members of a governing body there and not just, you know, random people to get together, have pizza, burn candles, and drink beer, then you would need to have, need to comply with the open meeting law if you're going to be talking about the public's business. So in this instance, you could have, let's say this is a gathering of a city council from a neighboring town along with some of their staff. They could get together for pizza, beer, candles, and as long as they're not talking about city business, as long as they're not deliberate creating towards a decision, and we'll go through some of these definitions a little more closely, but as long as they're not receiving information that would be used to deliberate or make a decision, then they can get together and have pizza and do what they want. So, so the first question is, who's at, is there a gathering? Is there a meeting? Who's there? And you said, well, what if we only have three people, three council members there? So we got three council members, the rest are just freeloaders and staff who are there. Is that subject to a public or to the open meeting laws? And classic attorney, it depends. You know, what is the purpose there? If it is just to eat pizza, light candles, you could say, no, probably don't need to. If it is there to gather information that may be used in the future to reach a decision, to deliberate towards a decision, then yes, that would probably be subject to the open meeting laws. And, and so even in the extreme, if you say, well, in this group, you know, most of our council members would never join in, that, there's only one council member there, and the rest of them are freeloaders and staff and layabouts that have come in for pizza, is that subject to the open meeting laws? And again, it depends. So if the one council member gathers information from the group, they're eating pizza, and then goes out and talks to another council member and says, hey, I was at, with this meeting of people, we came up with this great idea, will you support me on this idea? Or that kind of thing. Still, that's not about, would not be a violation of the open meeting law. On the other hand, if you expand that to reach a quorum of council members, which would be four people, then you run the risk of being accused of what is called a serial meeting, meeting that you're not meeting at the same time at the same place, but people are getting together and exchanging information and leading towards a decision on something. Again, we have, we, I've certainly not witnessed anybody or any ill intent or anybody trying to do anything my time here, but tries to comply with the law, but it does get complicated at times. So we've probably looked at those guys long enough and let them go. And if you, any questions at any time, feel free, obviously. So this is a summary of the open meeting laws. The Attorney General Lawrence Wasden has done a great job of producing a, an Idaho Open Meeting Law manual that we provide to elected officials and staff. They have, some of you may remember that Mike Patrick has partnered with Attorney General Wasden to put on presentations for public records and open meeting law around the state. And I think they may be coming back this fall to do some more of that. So there's some good resources out there. But, so basically, the point is that, that it is the, the government's obligation to do the business of the public in public. You know, when you have a meeting, we've gone through this a little bit, it's a convening of a governing body. And again, it doesn't have to be a quorum at one time, but if they're receiving information to make a decision or deliberate toward a, toward a decision, then that would be subject to the open meeting law. Governing body is a defined term. The city council is a governing body. It could also include subcommittees or other committees that are set up by statute ordinance or other law. And, you know, there are exceptions we can talk about, mainly the executive session exception, but really, the purpose of the law and the point, the intent of it is that any decision is made in public with full knowledge and full notice to the public of what's going on. One of the things people get hung up on a little bit, I think, and, and it is complicated. It's kind of working your way through a maze here to see what, what applies. But the definition of deliberation includes receiving information. So if you're getting information that then you later take and use to make decisions, that would probably, if, if they're a quorum, that would be subject to the open meeting law. I see a hand waving.
Michael, so you're saying all information that we as individuals would eventually, everything, everything, it seems like everything that we do eventually leads to making some decisions, whether we're together getting the information or we read the paper or somebody tells you is, am I missing something here? Am I drifting off? I think I need another beer. Just kidding, just kidding.
Woody, you're right on. I mean, that.
Well, isn't that what life is about, making decisions on information you come across along the way? And I, it seems so.
Right. And you guys certainly are not about making decisions without information. I can vouch for that. So, so you bring up a good point. Where do you draw the line and where is that line? And I think it is, I'm always, gonna always come back to what's the intent? Is there a decision somewhere? And so, for example, if you wanted to get information about a department leading up to a budget decision, you know, that could trigger that. But there's nothing wrong, and, and I'll end by, in a few minutes, by preaching that I am not here to discourage you in any way from talking to staff, talking to each other. I think the trick, or not trick, the, the challenge is, like you say, what information is, am I gathering that is then going to be used for a decision? And then am I, what am I doing with that information? Am I going to, in your case, three other council members? Worst-case scenario, getting everybody to basically make a decision behind closed doors, and then we come out in the public and that decision is rubber stamped. And that's the, you know, again, I've not seen that here, but that's the evil or what they're trying to avoid. So not a very good answer because you could say, well, everything's connected to everything. And so, but I think, look at it in terms of how close are we to using this information to make a decision? And even if you're gathering that information, then who do you discuss it with? So if you're close to an item that'll be on an agenda or be a decision-making, you know, talk to people, but don't try and make the decision outside the presence of the public. I don't know if that answered your question, but you good, Woody?
I'm good. Thanks.
Dan, English.
Just, I think that's helpful to have those definitions up there, especially, you know, as you use example of, you know, deliberation and there's a lot of, you know, things that kind of change that whatever. Anyway, that list, I just did a quick scan. I, I don't see it in here. Is it in this booklet or, but that's a handy thing, and I think that's going to go to the very core of what, you know, some of the different discussion on the open meeting.
Right. So the book you have is, is very handy. The statute itself is buried in there. I mean, you wouldn't need lawyers.
Okay. So it's not one place.
We made it easy. So it is in there. It's a definition.
Okay. Okay. Well, that, that answers for now.
You know, seventy-four, two oh two, open public meeting definitions. And that's where you can kind of work through, one is decision, two is deliberation, three, executive session, public agency is a defined term, governing body is a defined term, meeting is a defined term, you know, regular meeting and special meetings. And so all this presumes that, as always happens, our city clerk does the usual excellent job of posting our notices timely and, or if there's corrections like we had tonight, council action is done in public to amend the agenda to give the public notice of what's going to happen at the meeting.
Good.
But yeah, the definitions are in there. It's just, it's kind of at the back of the manual where they.
So to the final paragraph, maybe you can undo some of the legal ease definitions in there. I get the receiving and exchanging of information that's related. That's pretty clear. But it does say, if there's discussions of a general nature that do not specifically rate to a matter, then pending. So you just brought up the, the budget discussion, and it seems like if there's always a budget discussion, I mean, there's an ongoing budget discussions. So does that mean if, it would be clearer if you used example like a, a hearing for a zone change or, or something like that, that had a, a date, there's a pending thing, we know about it, it exists, we have all the information for it. So that's more clear. But when you have something that you said, if it's a matter, then pending, and deliberation can occur, which deliberation is receiving and exchanging information of a general nature of pretty, you know, without a, without a quorum. So multiple council members could be in that discussion. So clear that up for me. The matter, then pending, is any, could be anything that isn't already going to be a specific agenda item or information we already have in our hands or?
Well, it can be a matter to be decided in the future, but it's, I use the budget example because Troy just talked about it, it's coming up. You know you're going to be dealing with that. So, for example, if four of you got together, gathered a quorum, gathered information, decided, you know, here's how we ought to do this budget.
But it says it can occur without a quorum. Not four of us, but it says deliberation can occur without a quorum.
Yeah. And if you don't, the, the concern is that then if, if three of you, for example, that's fine, as long as you don't talk to anybody else about it and share that information with somebody else, then it become, or with another council member, then it becomes potentially a serial meeting because you've got a quorum, more than four or more people who have been discussing this information that's going to be used for a decision in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Kristi.
So Mike, are you saying that three of us could just listen to information if we don't talk amongst ourselves? That's not violating the open meeting law? Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the concern is that.
I didn't hear that. I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought you said if the three didn't talk to the fourth one, to make it a serial meeting because then it would make it a quorum. So the three can deliberate on that subject, but you said the risk is that those three could talk to another, one of those three could talk to another council member, which now means four people have been deliberating and that's a quorum, and that's the violation.
Right.
I might have missed it, but that's what I thought you said.
Right. And is that what you heard?
Yeah, but you said that three, as long as we didn't talk amongst ourselves, that three could listen.
Yeah. And, and, you know, part of this is, and I was sort of talking to somebody about analogizing to, to basketball, you know? What is a basketball foul? You know, have you ever really looked up what's a foul? And a foul carries a penalty with it, and different referees call different fouls. And if you have a strict interpretation of a lot of this stuff, it's like a strict interpretation of a basketball game, it really shuts things down. So I'm not saying you guys can't collect information. The concern, and then discuss it or have, confuse you, but the, so the example of three council members listening to somebody talk about budget or talk about whatever, that may come up for a decision, the risk you run is then if a fourth gets involved, then the potential is people can complain that that is a, you know, that was somehow decided, decision was made. And so you sort of push the risk. And so my analogy to basketball is how far do you go in being physical or pushing the line on what would become a foul? And the foul, in this case, we'll get to the violations, foul is the action becomes null and void. So let's say, just happenstance, if four people get together and it's alleged that they made a decision about the budget. Well, now we got offended. Well, if, if we don't win, the budget, the adoption, and I shouldn't use the budget, but it was timely, becomes null and void. So that decision would have to come back, we'd have to redo it. So there's risk, but that, and that's a risk. And then, then there is a personal civil penalty for individuals who participate.
Mike, you sent me some information, I guess it was yesterday, and I don't know if all of council got it, but it was just some legal case law on open meeting.
Sure.
And reading through everything you sent, it definitely opened my eyes that I've probably unintentionally been violating the open meeting law because we, in here, our own Judge Hayman issued an order about, you know, council people meeting one-on-one with the mayor, discussing anything on the agenda or with other council people at coffee, one-on-one.
Well, what, so that's where I don't, I want to back everybody away from the ledge.
I didn't realize that.
So let me, let me say, number one, don't confess anything on TV, you know.
You have to farm intent, right?
But number two, it really is, what is, what is, what are the intent of those discussions? So in the, the case that you referred to, it was a deal where one by one, people were called in. It was an unpopular land use decision in Sandpoint. Council members came in one by one and were basically noses were, or they were agreeing, we'll vote yes. So the decision was made behind closed doors. So it wasn't just exchanging information, talking with each other, having a cup of coffee. I don't want to discourage that. I think that's important. But it gets back to the intent of the public's business being done in open meeting. So the, the Sandpoint story is kind of funny because, and Wes Somerton was actually a lawyer up there for the city of Sandpoint, he's on our staff. So there's all these people upset about this land use project, and everybody signs up in opposition. I mean, the whole list is, we oppose this project. They come in, everybody testifies, the mayor says, all right, that closes testimony, can I get a motion? The motion, no discussion, no explanation. The motion is move to approve second. Everybody votes to approve it. And I was like, well, all the testimony, it's like going to court, all the evidence says no, and you got, how did that happen? Well, it turns out that there was a meeting, you know, individually. So that's the worst-case scenario, and that's the evil to be avoided. I, you know, we all are aware lobbying, there's variations of lobbying, discussing, but I think it's important that this council discuss with staff, with each other, just don't. that this council discuss with staff, with each other. Just don't do it, just be aware of the, if the discussions become more than, or become a quorum, you run the risk of the prosecuting attorney, or somebody complaining, and it becomes a, I don't know, it looks bad. And it is a violation of the law, probably.
Dan?
Mr. Mayor. So, I got to take an issue here with the fourth, fifth bullet. To deliberate means receiving or exchanging. I understand exchanging, but receiving to me doesn't seem to be a part of deliberation if it's just receiving information. And then the latter one, deliberation can occur without a quorum. I wish we had access to the statutes instead of this interpretation so I could look and see what the language was in the statutes, because I believe you need a quorum to deliberate.
So, the statutes are in that book right in front of you.
Not all of them. They're just bits and pieces in the footnotes.
No, if you go to like page twenty-three, the statute is quoted verbatim. And so, deliberation is a defined term, and it means, quoting, "The receipt or exchange of information or opinions relating to a decision, but shall not include the informal discussions." So, you know, the manual starts off with a whole bunch of questions and answers, which are good.
That's the part I read.
And then you get to the statute itself, and it, it is, again, largely a definitional, working through the definitional, or definitions, to see, does that fit with what you're...
Well, okay, so, given that, what happens when you have all council, and we attend an AIC conference? So, you have us all there. We're all receiving information about stuff that's pending for us, legislation. Is that a violation of the open meeting law? Because we are there, we are receiving information, the information that may come to us regarding a decision.
Yeah. Again, it's an educational process. It, the may come to you for decision is different than, oh, there's a pending decision here, and now we're getting the information that will help us make this decision. So, I'd call that more of an educational, you know, you guys can have a movie together, you can, you can get education together, you can go to receptions together. Again, getting back to the, are we crossing a line to where we are making a decision outside of a public meeting, or an open meeting?
So, you have, I love our fire chief. He always keeps us informed. He talked to each one of us individually about the fire boathouse. Each one of us individually. We were receiving information, all of us.
Yeah.
That's not a violation?
No, unless you went and talked to three other people about it, three other council members. So, he can come and give you information. I would invite, or encourage you guys to go, I never see, get to see you guys. Come visit me. You can come talk to, talk to anybody about it. Again, are you receiving that information in a manner that's shaping you towards a decision that you're making outside of an open, public meeting?
So, say, you know, we had an item on the agenda that's going to be about a new ordinance. Say, two of us want to come and visit you and talk about it. Is that a violation of the open meeting law?
No. I mean, I hate to say attorneys are special, but you guys can always come get legal advice, and we, that's an exception. We have executive session, but you can come and talk. I think ideally, the better practice would be one-on-one. Beyond that, sure, we can, we can talk. If it's not, if it's coming to talk to the fire chief, again, I think one-on-one is best. And again, it gets back to, what are we concerned about here? We're concerned that, you know, a small group, a quorum of people get information that isn't shared with the public, and then a decision is more or less made already, so.
Here's a, here's a puzzle for you. I'm sorry. Did you, are you on a roll? Because, so, according to statute, if council wants to declare a special call meeting, the mayor has the power to do it, but you need four council people to do it. How can four council people decide to call a special call meeting without violating the open meeting law?
I think that's an administrative act. It's sort of like, do you want sandwiches or subs for the workshop or something? I think there are, you know, you can get together because you're not, you're not deciding a substantive matter. You're just setting a, agreeing to set a hearing, or set a, set a motion, or set a, yeah, hearing.
See, there's, there's a lot of fuzz here. There's really, there isn't really a, and that's one of the things, you know, I don't want to get in trouble. No one wants to get in trouble. I, in my, my years here, I've never had anyone come up to me and say, hey, you're going to vote this way. I mean, it just, it doesn't happen. Not to me. I don't think it happens to anyone else either. But it seems like there's a lot of fuzz. There's just a lot of, of stuff here that, you know, we don't want to get in trouble, but, so two of us bump into each other in a parking lot, and all of a sudden, we're talking about something that's going on. Is this a violation of the open meeting, especially something that's coming up, you know? And I've gotten calls from other council people, you know, this is coming up. Do you know what this is, what this item is on the agenda? Do you know what that's all about? And I'm happy to talk.
Yeah.
But are you telling us now that we got to say, no, you can't talk to each other before the meeting if someone says something's coming up? Say there's some artsy thing coming up, and, and, you know, we're going to call Amy and say, you know, what happened at the Arts Commission meeting that wasn't in the minutes that this is coming to us now? You know, is that, that's not okay?
So, first off, I have to agree with you. There's a lot of fuzz on this, on this hairball. So, it is not a clear thing. And it's, so even talking to the sources, I talked to Attorney General's Office, the strict interpretation from them would be yes. But they also understand that we're human beings, and the exchange of information and talking, I won't cite, the attorney that said, you know, just don't ask me the question, you know, kind of thing. I want to go talk to somebody. Well, don't ask me if you're going to do it. It gets back to the intent. Do you have a, an underhanded intent? Are you trying to pull something by? No. Talk to people. If somebody calls you, talk to them. Just don't say, hey, Kristi, I just talked to Amy, you know, she's on board with this. Can I get you, seems like normal lobbying, but that's where you run the risk of somebody at some point in time saying, hey, wait a minute. It seems like this deal was done, it wasn't really brought up in a public meeting. And then you get into the violations and the potential penalties.
I just don't want to scare people into not talking.
No.
And especially not going to staff and asking staff questions. I mean, that's one of the things, you know.
Staff?
I think that's part of the reason. I mean, you look, you guys, you guys do some good staff reports, but sometimes there's things that don't make sense, and we need some clarification. We got to call you up.
Coming to staff...
I'd like to do that.
I'm sorry, Dan. Yeah, coming to staff is always appropriate. It's when the decision-makers, you know, you see four of them huddled up, making a decision, or, that is what the law is intended to avoid. You know, and again, I guess there's a quote in, you know, "The problem sought to be remedied by the open meeting law is the practice of a governing body first convening informally to discuss and decide how public business is to be conducted, and then formally convening to rubber stamp the secret decisions already reached in private." Now, I've never seen that, but that is, well, the Sandpoint example is, and that's the, that's what the law is intended to avoid, so.
Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mike, if we want, if this group wants to meet with staff to get their long-term goals and be prepared for a meeting on June eighth where we go over goals, maybe find out three to five years out what they think their needs will be, what's the best way for us to do that? Groups of three, doesn't need to be a quorum. Should we notice it anyway, and just ask the clerk to notice it? How can we do it?
Yeah. You know, we have general services, public works meeting. That's an example of three get together. We, we put a notice. I don't, I don't know if we televise them or not, but a notice, it's there. Everybody knows what's going to be talked about. Other council members know for sure what's being talked about. That is the better compliance, the better optics, if you will. So, that's what I would recommend.
So, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm just following up on Kristi's question. If this does write their say, an informal discussion of a general nature that do not specifically rate to a matter then pending before the public agency for decision. So, if we were to meet with the department head to say, what are your goals for three years or five years? What is this? And do you want to build a boathouse? Or are you going to do this or that? And it's general discussion to gather information, then this says you can do that without a quorum, as long as you don't have a quorum. So, that means the fourth, the fifth paragraph says what she was just talking about is okay and not a violation?
If you want to push it that close to the line, you know, I can't stop you, but that's the, that is the, the thing that the Attorney General and everybody says, why are you doing that? Why don't you just, if you want to do that, get together as a group, notice it up, put it on an agenda? Because you run the risk of somebody later down the line, and this is from the AG, making it a political issue, that this was approved. And so, somebody who wants to torpedo an otherwise great idea, that's, that's a good thing we should do, is going to say, oh, well, this was decided in a discussion outside of the open meeting. So...
And I, to be clear, I just am trying to make sure that what you're saying and I'm hearing accurately describe that, that final paragraph, and that Kristi's suggestion of saying, if that's what council decided they want to do, the right step would be to notice that meeting with the department head.
And that...
As a public meeting.
Yeah. And I'm just saying, that's the, that's the cleanest. I mean, nobody can complain about that. If you come in and three are together, and then three more, then, then it is a potential of a serial meeting. You know, the, a quorum ultimately heard the information, not together.
Right.
Or not at the same time, but...
But if it's publicly noticed, it's not in risk of being a serial meeting and getting anyone in trouble.
Right. And again, and if one of you wants to talk to two of you, it's where, well, one of you could violate it. So, one of you talks, and then goes to the next one and says, hey, I just talked to Gridley, and he said this, and about, and then around the room till you have four, that would be a serial meeting, arguably.
Yeah. I think I'm, I think I'm clear. I put the two together.
And question for Renata. The notice process is not, is not a huge issue, right? If you had planning and it has to be noticed, was it forty-eight hours prior?
It is another one of those. It depends. So, if it's an emergency meeting, you can notice it within forty-eight hours. But if it's a general meeting, you have to put a notice of the meeting out five days prior to the meeting, and the agenda out within forty-eight hours. So, we generally try and say, just put the agenda and the notice out five days prior. For meetings that are regularly scheduled, like the council, we have all of those dates noticed already online and posted on the bulletin board, so we only have to get the agenda out within forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. But if you don't have a generally set one, you need five days' notice. So, it's not, it's an easy process to put an agenda together. You just have to follow the timeline stuff.
Right. Okay. So, so it is, so if we work through Troy and yourself, and that was council's desire to do that, we just need a little bit of notice and a short agenda?
Yeah. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I just want to add, you know, it's been my privilege to work with a bunch of council members, and I've never seen, you know, anybody trying to, you know, do this, or get something behind the ball, or hide the ball, or anything like that. So, it's, and I don't want to discourage any of you from talking to staff or talking to each other. It's just be cognizant of, if it becomes looking like a quorum, or is a quorum, that's where you're subject to a violation, or subject to a decision being overturned. You know, the Attorney General's Office acknowledged there are not enough police in the world to referee or watch all of this. And so, it's really up to each of us to act appropriately. And so, I'm trying to give some guidance. And Randy and I are always around if you want to call and visit with us, or get any other resource.
I just wanted to say thanks, Mike, because this has been strange times in dealing with COVID and Zoom, and, and who we're talking to in the public. And we changed up our public works, general services meetings just at the beginning of the year, where we were, we merged all of those. So, so it's, you know, I appreciate that we have a chance to review this in public. And I, I'm speaking for myself, the last thing I want to do is violate an open meeting law, and I want to be as transparent as possible. So, I appreciate being able to talk about it, and, and have the handy new and almost updated book.
The AG is very generous with those. So, the last slide I forgot to put up there. There are, those are the online resources for the open meeting laws, the actual statutes, the manual, and then there is an opinion, I think the last one is the opinion about serial meetings. Attorney General's site has a lot of interesting opinions where they've recorded over the years, so.
Any other questions for Mike? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to announcements. Any member of the council have an announcement tonight? Dan?
I have an announcement. I have a question. So, the, the outdoor eating thing where we're going to consider waiving some of the fees for the outdoor dining, that's coming to us on June second. And I think I...
Not, nodding her head, yes.
It is. Okay, good. And I've also, we have something sitting on our council cubicle, and I've gotten contacted by some bar owners who want to know what the possibility is of waiving or dismissing some of the liquor license fees. I sent an email to Renata about that, and I think you'll probably be mentioning that at the next, I mean, that's, that's more complicated because it involves the state. But I have a question, and, and I don't know if you can answer, Mr. Mayor, or Troy can, but when are the basketball hoops coming back up?
Probably, it was scheduled for stage three. So, I think they moved stage three up now to, what, May thirty?
End of the month.
I think that's a stage three, yeah. So, so, end of the month.
So, basketball is, and I know, I know this is the state stuff. I'm not, not...
So, you can get your sneakers ready, Dan.
So, so, no, and I don't play basketball, but it's, tennis is okay, but basketball is, and that was a decision made by the governor?
Well, tennis, there's no possibility for any social distancing in basketball, right?
Okay, is that what it is?
When you have five-on-five basketball games, there's, if you're six feet away from who you're defending, that's a problem. Tennis, you're on either side.
I think they'd be up to the challenge. But anyway, I was curious why they were, why they were still down, and since everything else seems open.
So, the end of the month.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other council announcements? Although, I did see you, Dan, throwing the football in the park.
Yeah, because that's actually, you have to be, if you want to be fair about it, you got to be farther than six feet on...
Mr. Mayor.
No other announces?
Okay, what do you?
I'd like to move for approve the consent calendar as presented, including resolution two zero, zero, three, zero.
Second.
Motion, the second. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Renata, the roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gukin?
Oh, yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, we'll move on to item number two. We skipped over item number one. Item number two, the community grant award to the Boys and Girls Club in the amount of $10,000, and Hillary is zooming in. What I'd like to do is, Hillary is at number two, and then Hillary and Chelsea, and then she is also number six. So, Hillary, if you can hear me, can you hear me, Hillary?
Yes, we can hear you.
So, if you want to do number two, and then as soon as you're done with number two, come back to number six, so we can get both of those out of the way, so we can make efficient use of both of your time.
Okay. We can certainly do that. Great. Well, thank you for hearing this item this evening. It's a pleasure to be here with you on Zoom. So, let me get this PowerPoint full screen, so you can see that. Okay, great. So, we'll be giving you an update on the CDBG COVID funds, and then making a recommendation on funding, all related to COVID-19 response. So, the decision this evening is, should city council authorize staff to proceed with an agreement to fund the Boys and Girls Club in the amount of $10,000 to assist with their food pantry and staffing needs with the COVID funds in response to COVID-19? to assist with their food pantry and staffing needs with the COVID funds in response to COVID-19? So a little background, you've heard this, this is your third meeting. Getting a little background on the CARES Act and the fact that they made available some funds to us through our Community Development Block Grant. And the funds are to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. We have received or notified, we were notified we're receiving $199,675 in this fiscal year 20, and that's HUD's fiscal year. So the funds were accepted by city council at the May 5th meeting. And hopefully we'll get an agreement soon with HUD so we can have the funds in hand. But we are able to spend those in advance because they are for urgent needs. And they are also to serve our low and moderate income community members. You have seen the list several times of those specific activities that are eligible. And that's based on the HUD guidelines and then the ones that are specifically for the COVID funds. HUD has also allowed us two years to spend the funds. So while it's urgent, we anticipate that some of the impacts are going to be delayed for our businesses and community members. And so we don't have to spend all of them right away. We do have a little bit of time to spend those. So this is a slide showing the updated budget. Based on the last council meeting, we have shifted $30,000 from the admin line item into the Community Opportunity Grant Fund. So you can see in this middle column, it's been reduced to $9,935. And then the grants fund is increased to $189,740. And so we are confident that we can have just that $9,935 and allow Chelsea to work full-time on all of the CDBG projects, including the COVID funds, the distribution of that, and have additional funds for the necessary training for her and some of the other funding that we have to do on an annual basis. So this slide breaks it down a little bit more, just showing of the $199,675. We are allowed to have 20% maximum in that admin category. With the change we've made, we're closer to, we're less than 5%. So 4.98% for admin and then 95% approximately for community opportunity grants. We already had council approve the subrecipient funding for St. Vincent de Paul for the homeless services, Family Promise of North Idaho for assisting homeless families as well, and Lake City Center to expand their Meals on Wheels program. And we are recommending this evening $10,000 for the Boys and Girls Club for them to fill their food pantry and for staffing costs related to the COVID-19 response. So if that is awarded, there would still be $140,054 in the grant fund. So we did receive, there were 11 total grant fund requests. And those came in kind of that first week. We told you we'd sent out the email to 139 stakeholders and received the responses. And so there were 11 organizations that responded that had needs and they were complete requests. So this slide breaks down the categories of the funding requests. So we had two that were in the homeless program, so you can see that at the top. Those were both funded. The Senior Centers was also funded. That was the Lake City Center. The next one was a request for some PPEs for a substance abuse clinic. And that has been funded, we found out yesterday, through the CDA COVID-19 Relief Fund. So there's no longer a need for that to be in our funding considerations. We have received some other requests for the Food Bank Assistance, so the one before you this evening from the Boys and Girls Club. Another one that was for Food Bank and other public services related to equipment and supplies. We're looking for additional information from them to figure out, does that qualify? Then there are these next two categories, the health services, the laboratory, and then economic development related to the PPE manufacturing and small business technical assistance. We're awaiting further guidance from HUD. They have cautioned us to enter into any agreements related to economic development because there are so many reporting requirements, there's different eligibility required. And so they have told us to hold off on those. But we have been gathering additional information from those organizations just to understand their request. And then lastly, we did receive a request for rental housing subsidies and other public services. So in that group, we do feel that that is going to be a big need in our community, that they'll need help with some of the rental housing for paying rent and utilities. But we are also wondering if there's other organizations that provide that more on a community-wide basis. So we're seeking additional information at this time. So again, as noted on the other slide, there would be the large amount of money still remaining. And if you were to support the Boys and Girls Club, the agreements of the three that have already been approved, plus the Boys and Girls Club, would be $49,686 would be funded. So just to kind of summarizing, we talked about the eligibility and monitoring previously, but we really are waiting for further guidance from HUD. We're making sure that any of the requests that we have not recommended yet are eligible and include the low to moderate income benefit, because that's really a critical part of this. And then we're seeking additional information to make sure there's no duplication of benefits. That's another big no-no from HUD. So we have to make sure that they aren't receiving funds that are also covering that same cost and that there are no other funds available. So those are the things. We also have to look at how much time and effort it takes for staff, if there are small requests or if there are ones that need a lot of paperwork, because that can be very time-consuming. And that's going to be an issue for Chelsea if she can only be 40 hours through this duration of the HUD funds. And then if she'll go back to more of the part-time basis. So those are critical things that we are waiting for at this time. So next steps is to evaluate the remaining funding requests. We'd like to reach out to some other nonprofit organizations related to the community-wide housing services to see if there's a group or multiple groups that could do that through housing vouchers or utility payments. And then we would bring back any of the additional funding requests to council for your approval so that you know what organizations we think should be funded through the COVID funds. So our recommendation this evening is to fund the Boys and Girls Club in the amount of $10,000 to assist them with their food pantry and staffing. And we recommend holding back about $80,000 unless council has a different amount. But we feel like there is going to be some additional impact to our community members in the fall and winter. And we would like to save some funds so that we have the ability to reopen the grant and assist them at that time. So again, your decision point is considering the authorization to proceed with an agreement to fund the Boys and Girls Club in the amount of $10,000 to assist with the food pantry and staffing needs in response to COVID-19. With that, we would stand for questions.
Council questions for Hillary? Piki?
Well, I have a couple of things. One is, and it ties back to an announcement I should have made. But as, as most of you know, I get involved with Safe Passage, the Domestic Violence Prevention Center here. And they normally have their annual prevention breakfast about right now. And what they are doing is a virtual breakfast online on May 26th. And I've been doing interviews with a lot of community leaders and some survivors and putting that together. And in the course of that, had connected the executive director of Safe Passage with Hillary in the hopes that they can discuss a need for now and hopefully this, this fall, if Anita rises again, to be able to use some of this funding to house some people who may be displaced because of a domestic violence situation. So I don't know where Hillary's at with that, but it is, I'm just throwing out that it's one of the connections I made to see if this is a potential use of funding and support.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
You know, I could comment. We, we did a CBD money to Safe Passage a few years ago to fix a roof on a house where they had housing and stuff, so.
To their shelter.
Yeah, so they, they're starting to get the feel for how this works, I think.
Right, well, and I think that this, and I'm not, I'm not trying to speak for Hillary here, so. But I think that they didn't realize that there could be some other support during this, this. They couldn't shelter and place people because they couldn't leave. They couldn't leave their situation and such. So hopefully those discussions are ongoing and we can support some of those people that are in a bad situation.
Other council questions? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hillary, I have a bit of a puzzlement here that, so we were, we first came up with, this has been like, this is a serial meeting. We've had like part one, part two. We're now on part four. I mean, and it's noticed, okay, so we're cool. But it seems like this process has been going on for a while. So we were first approached with this, with the original three, you know, St. Vincent's Family Promise and the Senior Center. And during that time, we were asking questions about, you know, how were these things chosen? Why were they coming forward? We were told that there was a big batch, and one of the slides mentioned the big batch. And then reading through your staff report, I see that there's a lot of, you know, this is a federal thing, so there's going to be lots of strings and hoops and stuff. But it seems kind of interesting that, or puzzling to me that, so we had the initial 11. We were told that we would be getting information about how they were chosen and what the criteria was, why some were prioritized or seemed to have their stuff together a lot faster than others. And now we're doing it again with the promise of more to come. And it's, so it's, it's going to be Boys and Girls Club this time, just them. Is it, is it just, am I reading this correctly, Hillary, that they're just the only ones who are able to meet all the qualifications and get all the documents signed and boxes checked in time, whereas the other ones were still waiting?
So some of it is that we're waiting for HUD to provide us the additional guidance. And then, yes, it also is that they provided answers to all of our questions. So that is part of it. It's a little tricky and HUD's even said it. So they're flying the plane while they're building it, right? So they're waiting for guidance. They're, they're learning as they go. So we're doing the same thing. We're scrambling. We're attending webinars. We're talking to HUD reps. We're trying to review all the language and determine, are these eligible activities? And at the same time, you know, Chelsea is brand new to CDBG. So we're just learning, what are normal eligible activities? And now you have the COVID funds, which has another layer of complexity. So there are a lot of moving parts and pieces and we are just waiting for more information from HUD. And then we'll determine if we can bring another batch forward to you or if there's additional ideas. The Safe Passage one is a great idea. I think that could fit well under the rental housing assistance category. So I think that's one that could work well. The Food Bank ones, some of those are really easy. Other ones are very complicated for us to be able to fund.
Okay, and on the holding back of the 80K, how is that going to impact some of these other people who are already like in the queue that you have here in the list? You know, they're awaiting HUD guidelines, they're seeking additional information. I mean, will holding back the 80K affect those?
So we should be fine on that because we do have, I forget what the dollar amount was. I think there'll be, what, $140,054 remaining if the Boys and Girls Club is also funded this evening. So that would still have plenty of funding for those, especially the ones that we determine are eligible.
So Boys and Girls Club, they, they run a food bank and that's cool. What about our other food bank, the, like, the one up in the industrial park? Did they apply for funds?
They did not, no.
Oh, interesting, okay. Thank you.
Christie?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Hillary, do you have a timeframe of when you, if you hold back the 80,000, understandable. Do you have a timeframe between, I mean, like a date of when you'll try to expend the rest of the funds to these groups that have requested? You say fall, but do you have something more specific?
No, we really don't. Again, we're waiting for guidance from HUD. So it depends on when we receive that and the urgency of the needs. So it's possible some of the ones in the group of 11 won't even be eligible. So we'll be able to report back to you on that once we hear from HUD. And then if there are additional needs that arise within, you know, this timeframe before mid-October, we can use the remaining funds up to that 80,000. And if it looks like it's really urgent, we can come back to council and say, let's open it up now. So there's, there's a lot of flexibility. We just thought, let's not spend it all because what if we get hit even harder in the fall and winter and need to be able to provide some assistance to these groups?
Thank you.
Other council questions? Hillary, you may have mentioned this in, like Dan said, one of our serial meetings that we've had in regards to this. But has HUD prioritized any of the items to you? So they awarded the city $190-some-odd thousand to distribute in the community for this type aid. Is there, okay, your main priority is number one, which, say, let's just say that it's house, food and housing. Did they prioritize that?
Yes, those are some of the ones they prioritize. So they've said the housing and the homeless services and then the food tend to be the top ones that they are recommending. Those are also, tend to be the easiest ones for us for the monitoring and reporting requirements.
So when you score them, if they're in that priority item, is the score higher than something that is not prioritized?
Right, yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Hillary? If not, we'd be looking for council action.
Well, I would make a motion to approve a community grant award to Boys and Girls Club in the amount of $10,000 of CDBG CV funds.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
McEvers?
Oh, yeah.
Gukin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll jump now to item number six. This is Resolution Number 20-033, approving amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Policy for the Emergency Minor Home Repair Program Grants for up to $20,000 for sewer lateral repair or conversion from a failed septic system with signature authority from the Community Planning Director and/or Finance Director. Hillary?
Okay, great. Well, I don't have any fancy slides for you on this one, but it should be pretty straightforward. So we are before you this evening to seek authority to spend up to $20,000 for sewer hookups, for any failed sewer laterals, and also for septic systems that need to be connected to city sewer. And this would be for our low to moderate income individuals. It's part of the CDBG program through our Emergency Minor Home Repair Program. And so in the past, we had, initially when the program started, the maximum amount was 3,000. That was changed in 2009 to $6,000. And while that amount is great for the majority of the home improvement programs that we do, a lot of the roof repairs, leaks, things like that, it is really not an adequate amount to assist somebody with the sewer connection. Those range in prices from $13,000 to $20,000. And we just received a request recently that was right in that $15,000 range. And so it's important that we consider this this evening. There's also been letters that were distributed last year by the Waste Water Department notifying some of the property owners that they have one year to connect to city sewer. And so that timeframe, plus the immediate need of our LMI residents, we thought it would be appropriate to come to you and ask for this additional funding allocation. We have $96,000 currently in that MRAP budget category through CDBG. So the money's there. We just need the spending authority. And so the decision point this evening is city council should approve the request for authority to grant up to $20,000 for sewer hookups and lateral sewer line repairs or maintenance under the CDBG MRAP program. And with that, we'd stand for any questions.
So a quick question, Hillary. So this is just to expand the authority to $20,000? And if there is a request for that, then that's brought back to council for approval?
No, that would just be, it would go through our, our normal process with the MRAP. So unless council would like to see those, it would be administered.
So that would be, that would be a council decision if they would like to see that, see that come back to them, then? Questions for Hillary on this? Woody?
Just a couple, Hillary. So you're saying the city notified some people who are on septic that they need to hook up?
That's correct.
And that process is, where did that come from? I don't think we've heard that.
You know, I don't know if Troy or Mike might have a little more history on that. I know they, the Waste Water Department was kind of looking throughout the city to find out where are the zones where there are properties that have not connected and realized all the money that the city is losing out on by having people that are not in compliance with our city code. So I believe that was the impetus. And so they gave them a full year to comply. But I don't know if there's any additional background on that.
So do you know if cap fees are involved in this, in that? So do you know if cap fees are involved in this in that rate also? Can they pay their cap fees? If they're not hooked up to the sewer, they're just starting from scratch, right?
We would not cover the cap fees with the this would just be for the materials and the labor to connect this.
And these are the folks that qualify income-wise?
Correct. They would still have to qualify for income to be low, moderate income. And then it would also cover if anyone was converting from septic, it would help clean up and close up the septic system as they connect to the city sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Question question for Troy. So in the motion, it talks about a failed septic system. Is that what triggers a notification from wastewater to a citizen if they have a failed septic system?
Well, that one definitely does. But Panhandle Health had entered into an agreement with the city as we have a collection system throughout the entire city. So these people have been put on notice for years that they have a septic. So the art in this council member and mayor would be the fact that we have people that are out there that are paying their sewer fees and have never connected, or we can't find a permit. So that work has been ongoing as we are receiving the revenue, and we don't have a permit that they've done it. So those folks don't have to pay a cap fee. Once we've determined that they are not on the city's system, they have been paying in their monthly fees and not receiving any benefit. And so we have an agreement with Panhandle Health that said, we will work to get these people off of a septic abatement. And we had an LID in place from like the late 80s that was put into place for these folks to sign up for an LID, pay in monthly to get hooked up to our sewer system. So we are literally cleaning up that whole system, and we have a staff member that's been on this for years, working through all the utility billing, confirming permits, and seeking to find out if there's a lateral that comes from the house that goes to the city's system.
So let me ask you, is that Atlas, west of Atlas, the old that's where I last remember the sewer kind of being pushed on folks? Is that that area?
Nope, because those would have come on to the city's system with that annexation. This could be in the middle of town from days gone by when the septics, which hold up very well in our country, in our area, and they chose not to hook up. So the ones that aren't paying are pretty easy to find. It's the folks that have been paying.
So wouldn't that kind of give them some credit if they've been paying? Wouldn't there be a little bit of money that wastewater could help them with?
That would be the cap fee being paid because they chose not to hook up but are continuing to make the payment.
And around in a circle there.
Dan. Oh, I'm sorry, Woody, were you finished?
No, 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 I'm good.
Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And like Woody, this is this is news to me. Is there can we have someone from wastewater come and and give us kind of a little presentation or talk about what's going on with this, where it's happening in the city, what the reason is, the orders we've been given from Panhandle Health, if we could have a refresher, that would be awesome.
Sure.
Hillary, and I did have a sorry, Kiki.
Go ahead.
So Hillary, is this is this you said you received a request for this $20,000. Is this related to what we were talking about with people who need to hook up right now?
I know there's I'm not sure. I don't think so. There's their septic system is failing. So it has failed, and they need it to be cleaned up. And so it's perfect time for them to connect to the city sewer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kiki.
Just clarifying, Hillary, what I understand that you said is that this has been an ongoing program. And I kind of recall this coming to Public Works occasionally when the city would have the street opened up for extensions on work of on our own, and it happened to be going by one of these septic tank homeowners. They'd work with the homeowner to get them connected at that time. And what so I know that this has been this isn't like brand new, and it's not come up. I've identified these properties and know where they are. So my questions were, this is you asking for administrative authority to raise the amount invested into these hookups from 3,000 to $20,000. Is that where we're at with that piece of it?
So we already have authority to go to 6,000, so it's going up to 20,000 for just the septic.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's our decision point is to raise that authority to spend that amount of money. My second question is, as this has been gone owing ongoing, is that authority going to be ongoing? It's this isn't a COVID-related item. This is just so is this going to be an ongoing thing that affects CDGB funding in the future? And is there a finite number of these hookups that is slated to be done at some point? I mean, will it end at some point? Do you have that?
I don't know the second part. The first part of the question would be, yes, this would be an ongoing thing. It's not COVID-related. And the MRAP program is first come, first served. So we have that nice pot of money, and we put money into it each year to assist with our community members with the emergency minor home repair. So it's possible we might get a few requests for the sewer connections this year, and then the other ones would be for other home repairs.
And so there isn't really, and maybe this is further to council member Gookin's question, an identified number by wastewater of how many septics remain within the city limits that eventually need to be hooked up? Is?
Wastewater probably has that, but I don't know that they've cross-referenced it with the LMI community members.
Okay.
Because our funds can only go to those individuals.
Okay. That was my endgame there. Thank you.
And I think, Kiki, some of those are unknown because there are people that are paying into the sewer, that they don't have records that they actually hooked into the sewer. So they probably have a count of how many that is, but but it could be more than that. And hopefully, we'll get some more information on Dan's request when we have a presentation.
Well, I was just going to say, it sounds like, yeah, some good questions that would be answered through that, so. But hopefully move to the decision at hand now.
Any other questions for Hillary or Chelsea? If not, we'd be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve resolution 20-033, which is approving an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant CDBG policy for the Emergency Minor Home Repair Program, MRAP, grants up to $20,000 for sewer lateral repair or conversion from a failed septic system. I would like to grant a signature authority to the Planning Director or Finance Director, but I also want it to come back to us. I'd like since this is kind of a unique request, I think just having more information on that would be would make me happy. So if anyone wants to second that, that would be cool.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Motion and a second further discussion. Dan.
Well, I was with you right up until that, but this is this is an existing, ongoing administrative program that in a different capacity, you know, I'm aware of that they've done this for years and years, and I don't I don't think we want to have that kind of a thing coming back to the council, you know, I guess to be aware of it. But but I think we need to, I mean, they're already doing this. It's there's all kinds of things that staff do. So anyway, I think that, you know, could get some more information and maybe, you know, get it more of a comfort level with it, but I don't think we should have that coming back, so.
It's just, Mr. Mayor, just to to comment on that, it just it's it's a it's an unusual request that's increasing this budget item substantially from what it normally is. And normally, I'm okay with all this stuff. I mean, if you look through the review, and they usually do a review of what they've done, and it's really good stuff that I support. I think it's probably the best part of CDGB. But it seems to me it's an unusual request, it's very specific, it's very large, and therefore, I think being a little bit more transparent would be the way I would like to go for it. So that's just that's my my two cents on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Kristi.
Dan, so are you Dan and Dan? Are you are you just looking for after the fact, council's just made aware of it? You're not looking for us to approve it?
Oh, no, 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 yeah, I think we're approving it tonight. And basically, all I want to do is I want to get the information afterwards to just to get a follow-up on what happened. And that's that's it doesn't even have to be at a meeting, per se, but I think just because this was so specific, you know, I still want to the motion, I think, is still to give them authority to do this. So I'm okay with that part. I just want to get the follow-up as to what happened afterwards.
Yeah, so I thought I was seconding.
Yes, that's what you seconded.
Thanks.
So Dan, just a just a update when it's finished or an update before the the work starts?
Heads up to heads up to council that it's been awarded, and here it is, and we're ready to go. It's it's just it's it's and I don't know if Hillary wants to weigh in again here, but it's it's $20,000, but it increases the entire fund. So theoretically, I mean, if this thing fell aside, we'd still have $20,000 in there. So it seems to me that under the special circumstances, getting the additional information would be beneficial to us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may clarify, so it wouldn't add any more money to the MRAP budget. So it would just be out of that pot of money, we would spend it. But I'm fully supportive of sending heads up to council alike. You know when we do award one.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Hillary and Chelsea. Now we are back to item number three, which is council bill number 20-1006, approving municipal code amendments to chapter 1709, article. Dan, help me with that. My Roman numerals aren't, is that four?
I'm not even paying attention, so you're fine.
Article four, design review procedures and chapter 2.98, design review commission. I might have skipped that class.
You got more information than I do.
Tammy, is Tammy out there?
Thank you, Mr. and Council. Yes, that is number four. You're correct.
Number four, there we go.
So staff is requesting approval from the city council for the proposed code amendment for chapter 1709, article four, design review procedure, and chapter 2.98, design review commission. The design review commission procedures have been in need of an update for several years. The planning department, administration, and design review commission discussed the required DRC requirements as it relates to projects within the city and how the process could be improved and streamlined. Following direction from city council, to better streamline the process, staff asked the design review commission to participate in a survey providing feedback to staff with suggestions to help streamline the process and better serve the development community. Staff also held several workshops with the DRC and discussed the proposed amendments. The DRC provided comments and feedback through the survey, which assisted staff in developing an informal process to test out the procedural streamlining for several DRC requests with support from administration and legal. The streamlining had positive results for staff, the development community, and commission members. Based on successful feedback from developers and the commission, staff is bringing forward the proposed amendments, which we believe will formally expedite and simplify the process for all parties. The purpose of the proposed DRC procedure amendments will do several things. They will remove the first meeting with the DRC and replace it with a meeting with staff and the applicant. They will identify projects that should be reviewed administratively, and they will provide clarification for the developer for the timelines required for submitted items. There are also some minor housekeeping items included in the proposed amendments. The proposed amendments to chapter 2.98, design review commission, remove the standing alternates, clarify quorum, specify DRC meeting dates, and clarify public notices and comments on proposed projects. Decision point and recommendation, staff and the planning commission recommend to the city council that the proposed code amendments regarding the proposed design review procedure and design review commission be adopted. And that concludes my staff report. I also did provide proposed design review procedure amendments at a glance document. That's included in your packet, and I would be glad to go through that in its entirety if you'd like, but I thought I would try to be efficient here and provide the summary of what the request is. Thank you.
Counsel questions for Tammy. Woody.
So Tammy, I probably should have got to you earlier. This design review thing has been in my lifetime, and I probably still haven't wrapped my head around why we're doing it, other than we like metal siding and weird color combinations and not flat things. So I have a question on the purpose, that paragraph there, there's some words that you need to help me with. Identify projects that should be reviewed administratively. What is that?
Well, that would be done by either Hillary or city staff. And I'll give you an example. We have the project in Riverstone. It was the affordable housing multifamily apartments. And that went through design review. It did go through through at least two meetings with the design review commission, and I believe they may have had a third one for the final decision to meet current code. Then when we decided to go ahead and do the survey with the DRC and take their comments and feedback and streamline and test it out, there was another project, I believe it's Hudson Apartments, just on the east side of the Winco, you know, Winco. And that one only had one meeting because we were able to administratively look at that. And with legal and administration's help, make a determination that they would only need to go through one meeting. And in this case, if you choose to adopt this code, projects like that may not even need to go through the first meeting. Staff could administratively approve it as long as it meets the code requirements within the commercial design standards, for example, or infill guidelines.
Phew, she knows her stuff, huh? One other question in that same paragraph, talking about amendments to remove standing alternates. What is a standing alternate?
That would be a member of design review commission that was a commission member, but they were an alternate, so they didn't vote, but they could come to the meeting. And, you know, a lot of times they came and they weren't able to vote, so we decided to just eliminate that.
Okay.
We've got a great design review commission, always in attendance, and typically always have a quorum.
Okay. My last question to you, because you've been involved in it, I think, pretty much the whole time.
Yes, I have.
Do I remember the DRC being originally created for downtown?
That is correct. That was in 2003, and then I believe in 2008, they added the infill, you know, DOE, Midtown Overlay, and Infill East.
Okay, so and now it encompasses certain zoning. Is that correct?
Well, there's an underlying zone that would exist, and then that infill area or downtown core, you know, the regulations, that's an overlay.
Okay. So that these guys will have some say over what happens on Atlas, is that correct? Atlas Mill Site? The way the buildings look and things like that?
Well, I believe within, and Hillary may be able to speak to this too more specifically, I believe within the guidelines that were adopted with the approved PUD and their, I'll say CCNRs, I think that there are some there's some guidance in there for what their buildings need to be, how they need to be designed. Hillary, can you weigh in on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So for Atlas, we're going to have an architectural review committee, and so that group would review the architecture to make sure it complies with the Atlas development standards, and then staff would be able to review through the building permit process. So the commission would not be triggered for Atlas.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, Gookin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that was one of my questions that I had, Tammy, was the history of this thing. I know we've had a design review committee. I know that at times they've been quite controversial, but and and maybe this is a philosophical question, so I don't know if it's up to you, or maybe I want to hear what the mayor would have to say, but why? Why do we have this? I mean, what what really drives this as opposed to, I mean, is it is it the beneficial of staff because there's there's an extra set of eyes on it? Is it because people were complaining about ugly buildings? Is there a specific reason why we have this this committee?
Hillary is probably Hillary or Tammy is the best one to weigh in on that. So either one of you ladies can start off as to the the purpose of a design review. I mean, I think in downtown, it's in a downtown area, residential area, it's to have a little bit of a say in what the buildings look like, as much as I'm not very sophisticated in that. So I'll let one of the ladies weigh in on that.
So the commission and Tammy has more probably the history of how this commission, you know, the purpose, how it was formed, because that was really, it was very intentional when we created the design guidelines for the downtown and then the infill districts and bringing together the commission. For staff and for the city as a whole, it's really is beneficial to have kind of this neutral group that convenes, that can look at a project and look at the merits of it in relation to the design guidelines and the design standards. So they're not looking at paint colors, or not looking at different things like that. They're truly looking at the massing, the scale, how it relates to the surrounding uses. Does it comply with the design standards? And then they provide feedback. So the commission is made up of, we have architects on there, we have landscape architects on there, we have developers on there. So it's a wide variety of individuals that provide a perspective. And it's nice for staff, so that we're not the one person making a decision, and then it gets appealed through the process. You know, it's like our other commissions and the council, where there's different opinions, and so the ending decision tends to be very positive. And as Tammy said, this commission is a great group of individuals. We have been able to really streamline the process. They understand, you know, they're not denying projects, they're really just providing great perspective, so that the final designs are an improvement over what comes in initially.
Does that help you, Dan?
Yeah, it does. It just, there's been two incidences since I've been on council where this has come up, and the first one was the One Lakeside Tower, where the residents of Coeur d'Alene North were trying to use the Design Review Committee to get that thing torpedoed, and it didn't work. And then the second one was the Hagadon Hotel Expansion, which the Design Review Committee, if I recall, rejected, and then the hotel was withdrawn. So it seems like whenever it comes up to us, or whenever it kind of rises to the attention, it's a little controversial, and that's why I asked the question.
Kristi?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Well, I just noticed, Hillary, that you, there was a decision made by council three years ago to review the process. And so that tells me that Dan and I have three years to come back to you all with the council conduct policy. But also, in looking at the commission, they're all great people, but I did notice there are not any women on it at all, and so I don't know if that's...
Are you volunteering?
No. But I don't know how that is, how they're appointed, and if that's something that we all pay attention to. Does the group try to pay attention to our committees and if there's women on them? Maybe that's not a question for Hillary, who's asked a question for all of you.
Mr. Mayor, I could respond to that, because we do, so George Ives has stepped down as the chair, and so there is a vacancy, and so we have reached out to committee members. I believe we have one applicant that is a woman, so it would mix diversity a little bit of the group if appointed.
Thank you.
Kiki?
I, this question might be for you, Tammy. In here, it says that you, it says based on successful feedback from developers and the commission. How did you reach out to those developers, and was there a number of them? And can you tell me a little bit about that? I like that this has been a work in progress, and you're there, but I would sure like to hear more about the in-depth input from the developers who this would affect.
Sure, no problem. The other example, the apartments that are going to go in on Ramsey Road, we worked with Drew Ditman, and rather than going through the three meetings that were required, we did explain to him that we were testing out this streamlining, and he provided all the information and checked all the boxes as far as how he met the criteria for that project as the engineer, and went through design review with him on that one, and we were able to go through that in one meeting. Another example, Sherman Five, East and West, here on Sherman Avenue, I believe, between 10th and 11th, I think. We took a look at the first five single families there, townhomes, and because the ones on the east side mirrored, we worked with Chad Oakland and his development team, and were able to take a look at that with design review and got through that in one meeting. And they were both happy with the outcome, that we were able to streamline the process again and keep things moving for our development community.
So this has been sort of a test it for the last three years and walk it through that way, rather than a survey out to a bunch of developers and check the boxes type situation? So it's been a live test of the actual change? Is that...
That's correct. I'll also add, we probably went for nine months, I'll estimate, with no design review items. And then we had a gap here and there when we get them, and then, of course, most recently in the last 12 months, we've had a number of them along with all the other projects that have come forward to the city and city staff. So it's sometimes hard to test it when we have a bit of a gap.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tammy or Hillary?
I just have a quick comment. Tammy, I just want to thank you for your at-a-glance sheet here. It was extremely helpful, so appreciate it.
Great.
Any other questions? If no other questions, we'd be looking for council action. Okay, Woody?
I'm struggling with this. It keeps growing, you know? I mean, I get it. Coming from planning and zoning many years ago, I guess there was a need for this, because as I recall, somebody built a big building on between Sixth and Seventh and covered one side with brick, and nobody liked it. And I thought, that's where this came from. Also, I thought about the skyscrapers and the vision, the being able to see, so they didn't become walls. That's what I remember this to be. Is that, Tammy, am I just tripping?
Woody, you are correct. That would be back in the Dave Yaden times, when he was the planning director, and I worked with him a little bit as he worked through this, and it was, I guess, the public was concerned about the large structures and tall condos being built downtown and the shadows, and that type of development that would impact our downtown. And that's how they started. Mark Kinshaw came from Seattle and was the consultant that the city hired to work on this and create the downtown core guidelines and standards. So that is how it started.
And I guess that's my point, is it started off as keeping views and vistas and square footage and being able to do parking trade-offs for cool places for the public to go, and now it's this monster, and I don't mean to say a bad monster, it's a good monster, but it's sort of, it stretched out throughout the city, where it was kind of focused downtown to make downtown cool and make people comfortable here. So I know this is basically admin, it's to kind of simplify things, make it easier, but, you know, I've had to listen to the builders call me and developers and bitch and moan about, ah, they're making me jump through this hoop, and they don't like flat surfaces, and they haven't talked about color, but that's my own thing, learning all these new colors and these new sidings, and I'm, sure, Mayor, you just jumped through all these hoops, right? So again, I'm going to somewhat support it, but I'm not going to put my name on it. I'm sorry. Come on, somebody, you're passionate. Dan, come on now.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate, you know, your feedback here, and I was thinking the same thing. It's like, you know, at what point does it become guidelines and then it morphs into a pain in the ass? And that, you know, because I understand what you're saying, and I remember, you know, Susie Snedeker told me about this, and she was one of the people who was pushing for this, because she didn't want these big, ugly, you know, not that anyone wants them, but that's the kind of the fear, is you're going to build a big old Soviet cinder block style building and stick it in the middle of downtown. But, you know, it seems like they, I mean, I like the way things look around here. I don't think there's anything that really is too hideously ugly. We all have opinions, but they've kind of, if this has been in place for 20 years, then I got to say that maybe it's been working, if it's just adding more bureaucracy, and I haven't heard that kind of feedback from the developers, I don't know, maybe Kiki has, that, you know, that, what have you heard?
I'm just, you know, I'm just looking at it, saying that, my line of questioning was, is this making it easier on the developers? And is there, has their feedback back to Tammy been, we like this process better? We agree that it's existed for 20 years. You're not really changing any of these huge things that have already existed. You're kind of administratively making it simpler. That's kind of what I view the crux of what's going on here, is, did I misunderstand Tammy? Or...
You are correct. We're streamlining the process, making it a little bit easier and faster, because some of the projects can be done administratively. Because the code stayed, you know, two, at least two meetings, and sometimes three, that was the guidance we had until, you know, we decided to test this out and work with Legal and Admin to work through some of the kinks in here and try to make it flow a little better for the developers, staff doing the staff reports, and the Design Review Commission. So I think you'll find developers, it'll be a little easier process.
And so I think that, you know, for the, to your question, it's not going to go away, and we're not really adding anything, changing it. What I feel like is happening here is that there's been a way to administratively streamline the process, and they're probably still going to call you. So, you know, they're still going to call me. It's just what's going to happen when they don't want to be told what to do at all, but for, you know, everyone's benefit, there's been this structure in place, and I think if the bulk of the developers have gone through this and are aware of it, and they seem to say, hey, it's saving me time and effort and money on what I have to do anyway, then can't be that bad of a thing.
I think that's a start of a motion.
I was feeling very...
I was thinking it too.
Very emotionless.
Taking her on.
But I think we have to dispense with the rules on this, don't we?
That's what I was looking for.
Okay, then I'd make a motion to dispense with the rules and read Council Bill 20-1006, once by title only.
Second. Motion and a second, further discussion? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill number 20-1006, an ordinance amending Sections 2.98.020 and 2.98.050 of the Municipal Code of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, to clarify the process for appointing and removing members of the Design Review Commission, eliminating alternate members, amending the composition of the commission, and deleting certain procedures, repealing Chapter 17.09, Article Four, Municipal Code, entitled "Design Review Procedures", adding a new chapter, 17.09, Article Four, Municipal Code, entitled "Design Review Procedures", establishing procedures for the Design Review Commission, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for the publication of a summary of the ordinance, and providing for an effective date thereof.
Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, if anyone would wish to venture on to the next step?
I'd make a motion to adopt Council Bill number 20-1006. Second?
Motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Pause. Yes.
Her name's on it.
At the end, though.
Motion carried. Thank you, Tammy and Hillary.
Thanks, Dan.
Now, we are on to Resolution number 20-031, approving a one-year lease agreement for one John Deere Grader with Papay Machinery, which will be the first of a series of five lease agreements for this equipment, and which will result in the city owning the grader. Who do we have on tap to make the presentation? It says Tim Martin. Are we zooming in, Tim Martin?
Well, I could tell you that you're way zooming, but I don't think my camera's working anymore, so...
Oh, yeah, easy way out.
If I could go through this with you tonight, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, and we know what you look like.
Well, my hair's a little longer than yours.
Oh, there you go.
There we go. So what I'm looking for tonight is, should council authorize the Streets and Engineering Department to enter into the first of five one-year contracts with John Deere Incorporated for a John Deere Grader? And if I could take a couple moments to kind of go back in history, that in fiscal year 2014-15, council approved us to go out on a piggyback with ITD on a lease with a John Deere Grader from Papay Machinery at that time, and the five-year lease is up in the 1st of April of this year. So they've come back to us and asked if, you know, there's an opportunity to extend this lease for another five years, and at the end of the term, the department would own the grader. Now, the department, in my staff report, I say that the department has $22,000 in the budget for this year, but we actually have $39,000 in our lease agreement line item for this grader. The department needs to have a frontline grader. Not only do we use these in the winter to cut snow floor and ice, but we also use it to blade and grade our alleys and our gravel roads in the spring and fall, as well as use this grader, we would be using this grader during leaf pickup. As I mentioned in my staff report, we leased, or we rent three graders every winter to help us, support us during our plowing efforts. These graders are out in front of our loaders with the gates on them, and that is to cut the ice out of the center of the road. So as winter continues and it gets colder, we don't have huge ice floors, like you may have experienced, you know, 20, 25 years ago. When we first started using the loader gates, we talked about, we did them in certain areas of town, and we went and talked to the people about it, and they mentioned in there that you need to have a grader in the front to cut the ice. The truck plows just go over the top of them. So with that, you know, Troy, Troy may help me here a little bit, but, you know, his thoughts and ideas with this grader, or grader, the payment on how we can handle this going forward, during the winter months, I rent three graders, and at the cost of $5,000, $5,050 a month per grader. So by purchasing or running, doing this contract, right there, I would say $15,000 to that contract, and Troy is working with Bonnie and has come up with a solution on how we can come up with the rest of the money for this purchase. With that, I stand for any questions, Mayor.
Questions for Tim. Woody?
So, Tim, you said you started this lease in 1415?
That's correct.
So we want to extend it for another five years?
That's correct. These graders, if I could, sir, we should see a lifespan of 20 years out of this equipment. When we had this lease a few years ago, you know, when we entered into this, we replaced the 1974 graders, what we took out of the, out of our fleet and went into this purchase.
Okay, so what we're doing is, we, it takes us 10 years to lease it, and then theoretically, we'll get another 10 out of it after it's paid for.
That's correct.
When we do the big tractors, you lease those pretty regular. We don't purchase them, we turn them, right?
Correct.
Maintenance is included in there. Is that right?
Yeah, what we've found is, with these grader, with the loaders that we, or tractors, as you call them, after a certain point, they start costing us money. You know, with this grader, you know, we had, the first five years, we had no issues other than change in oil and general maintenance.
Okay. And then, so this is sort of like a rent to own, or a lease to own?
Correct.
But you're asking it at one year at a time, and that's just budgetary?
It's got to do with state code and appropriations, that I can't have it bound to another council, so it's got to be approved yearly.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions for Tim? Kiki?
Tim, is there an opportunity to negotiate the interest rate on the remainder of the lease?
I think you would have to talk to Troy. I mean, we did, we worked them pretty hard on that, and that was the best we could come up with.
Tim stated it pretty well, yes. We went to Deere, we went to Papay. They were and are offering a 1.95 fixed rate of interest, no prepayment penalties, and as Tim did a good job of explaining, it's an annual appropriation, and we just put it into five one-year contracts. The purchase price was also negotiated to a reasonable dollar amount for the... Tim, how's that? The purchase price was also negotiated to a reasonable dollar amount for the, Tim, help me, how many hours are on that grader?
We have about 2,200 hours, which is minimal. I mean, this thing, we're, we're going to see 12,000 to 15,000 hours before you, you would have to get rid of this machine in, in what we use it for in the municipality.
Any other questions for Tim? If not, we will be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Resolution 200 through 1, approving a one-year lease agreement for one John Deere grader with Papay Machinery, which will be the first of a series of five lease agreements for this equipment, which will result in the city owning the grader.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? A question for Mr. Gridley. This is like, like Tim said, we're not obligating future councils. This is a lease. We can stop it any year. Future council decides, yeah, I don't want a grader. We're good. He's nodding his head, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Can I take this in a parade? Just asking.
Oh, my God.
Ride the blade.
Just throwing that out there. You're good. Thank you.
If, if we so need to.
Well, since we're kind of going down that path, I, when you said 1974, that other grader, that would have been five years after I graduated from high school. And we just had our 50th year reunion. So, for what it's worth.
I didn't think they made things that last that long anymore.
You have quite a few hours left in you, don't you, Dan?
I hope so.
There's no other discussion. Roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
Motion carried. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Move on to Resolution Number 20-032, approving the award of the bid and contract with Mars Company for the purchase of a new water meter test bench system for $399,403. Kyle, Marine?
Thank you, Council, for having me tonight. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right. So, I've got a presentation for you here. Let me share my screen. All right. Hopefully, you can see that okay?
Yes.
All right. So, the city water department changes around 2,000 meters per year on annual, annual maintenance program. The map below shows this year's grid of what we're changing out. A typical three-quarter and two-inch meter, left side is a three-quarter inch meter, right side is a two-inch meter. We have over 16,000 three-quarter inch meters in the city, and just over 802-inch meters. We have multiple other sizes, but those are our primary meters within the city. A new three-quarter inch meter is just over $206, and a two-inch meter is just over $705. With a test bench, we can recertify our used meters and rebuild them, and have a reduced meter purchase on next year's cost of around $88,000. Each year, we expect it to go up slightly because of inflation on the cost of meters, but we can greatly save on our meter purchases due to being able to rebuild them. This is a proposed layout of a Mars meter test bench. It's got several tanks that are certified by the state for weights and measurements, where we can push water through the meters on these benches here. This is for a three-quarter inch. This is for a two-inch and larger. And it weighs the water that goes through to get a 99% accuracy rating. This is a typical layout of the Mars bench, something similar to what we're looking at. It doesn't exactly have the two-inch and larger on this side. This is a one-inch setup and a three-quarter inch setup. The ones that we are considering are a three-quarter, one-inch setup, and then a two-inch and larger setup on one side. As we rebuild a meter, we have to have it certified by weights and measurement. It'd be like selling gasoline through a used pump and not giving actual amount of gas through it. So, very similar with the water aspect. We have to certify it before we can reuse it in the field. So, I am proposing to council to get permission to purchase a Mars meter test bench for $399,403 to help us reduce the amount of cost each year on our meters purchased. We figure that the meter test bench will buy itself back in a roughly four and a half to five years. We're plus minus a little bit depending on the zones that we're in. And for that, I'll stand for any questions.
Council questions for Kyle. Woody?
So, Kyle, what's the life expectancy on this?
We had an older meter test bench well before my time. I want to say from the 1950s. And it finally got decommissioned in 2002, mainly because it was falling apart, also because there's new criterias in testing meters that you have to have it certified with weights and measurements. So, we're seeing most of these test benches last well into 20 years with some small modifications. You do have to have them recalibrated on an occasional basis to make sure you're within state standards.
So, what kind of yearly maintenance fees are involved there with all those standards? It has to be met. Do you know what that cost is?
To maintain this? Yes. It's a, it's a minimal cost, and we've included that in our, in our budget for, on our annual basis. And it's based on the amount of meters tested. It can be around $18 a meter, or it just depends on the amount. So, if you have a larger amount, you can get a reduced cost on it. If you have a smaller amount, it's a little bit more to make up the difference for Mars to do the calibrations on the unit.
And I, I read in the report that this was, you have a space designed in the new water building for this. Is that correct?
Correct. So, on my previous slide, that would be a basic layout for that room.
Okay. And was this invol, was this in the original budget for this building?
Yes, we have a dedicated line on it for this purchase.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kyle? If no other questions, we will be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 20032, approving the contract with Mars Company for the purchase of a new water meter test bench for the Holy Mackerel,
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Kyle. Move on to our first public hearing for tonight. This is a legislative hearing, legislative hearing ZZ-1-2-0, requesting zone change from C-17L to C-17 at 4301 North Crown Avenue. Mike Behary is with us tonight. Welcome, Mike.
Welcome. Let me go ahead and share my screen, but won't let me share. Still has Kyle's screen up. Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing for Item ZZ-1-20, applicant by Zenetti Brothers, Inc., requesting a zone change from C-17L to C-17, and represented by Engineer Lake City Engineering. The location of the property is located at 4301 North Crown Avenue, and legal notice was published in the Coeur d'Alene Press on May 2, 2020, and all other required notifications have been made. Property is located here, highlighted in red.
We're not seeing your presentation.
Can you see it now?
You cannot.
No.
How about now?
Not yet.
No.
Sorry.
It just shows us.
Wait.
Okay, there, sorry.
There you go.
Is this working now?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want me to start at the beginning? Nope.
No, we heard.
Okay. Sorry, this is, this is a bird's eye view of the property looking north. This is a bird's eye view looking west. The previous use on this property was RVs, and that is no longer the use. And this is the applicant's exhibit showing the, where the property is to be rezoned at. There are four findings that need to be met in order for a zone change to be approved, finding B8 through B11. First finding, finding B8, that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan indicates this in the U.S. 95 corridor area, and it's located in transition, and transition areas are areas that are likely to change over the planning period. This slide represents three comprehensive plan objectives as it relates to the zone change request. The full list is on page eight of your staff report. Objective 1.12, community design. Objective 1.14, promote the efficient use of existing infrastructure, thereby reducing impacts to underdeveloped areas. And objective 2.0, business image and diversity. The next finding is finding B9, that public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. City staff from each of the departments has reviewed this application, and each department has indicated that there are adequate public facilities and public utilities available to serve the proposed request. The full list of staff reports on page eight of your staff report. The city engineer has indicated that Crown Avenue must be improved to city standards along the entire frontage, including sidewalk, swales, curb, and gutter, with any construction on the property. The Streets and Engineering Department has no objection to the proposed zone change. Finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. The subject site is generally flat and a slight drop in elevation towards the north and west part of the property. There are no topographical, physical strengths that would make the subject property unsuitable to change the zoning from C-17L to C-17. Here's the topographical map indicating the topography. You see this very slight slope on the property. Here's some site photos of the property. This is on the northeast corner looking west. This is on the north central part looking south. This is on the northeast side looking south. Here's a photo of looking in the existing facility on the site. And here's a property, here's a photo looking northwest through the vacant part of the property. The next finding is finding B11, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regards to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. The city engineer has indicated that the nearby Kathleen Avenue and government way have the available capacity to accommodate additional traffic generated from the subject site. But access in and out of Crown Avenue could slightly be more congested during peak hours and could be challenging for left turns. The Streets and Engineering Department has no objection to the zone change as proposed. To see the city engineer's full comments, please see page 12 of the staff report. This is the zoning map indicating the surrounding zoning. To the north, we have C-17. To the west, C-17. To the south, C-17L. And to the east, R12. The proposed C-17 zoning district is intended as a broad-spectrum commercial district that permits limited service, wholesale retail, and heavy commercial, in addition to allowing residential development at density at 17 units per gross acre. The following list is a list of few, of principal uses that are permitted in the C-17 zoning district. You have department stores, veterinary office, mini storage facilities, a hotel, automobile sales. The applicant has indicated they plan to expand their auto dealership into the vacant part of the property, but the zone change is not tied to a specific use. Zone change map, in 1988 and 1984, there were two zone changes from R12 to C-17L, and those were both approved. And then in 2017, to the west, there was a zone change from light manufacturing to C-17. Surrounding land use to the north is commercial, to the west is commercial, and also to the south. And to the east, we have single-family and duplex housing. The decision point tonight is to provide a decision regarding the proposed zone change from C-17L to C-17 on approximately 6.2 acres. We need to consider this request to make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. And that concludes my presentation. I stand for any questions you may have.
Council questions for Mike. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I knew that was going to happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mike, on finding B9 on the streets, you mentioned that Crown Avenue must be improved to city standards. They would pay for that, correct?
That is correct.
And do they pay for that regardless, even if they're expanding the, the dealership to the north-southward, they're still required to improve that street?
Yeah, that's, any, any type of development they want to do, they'll have to improve that street. That'll trigger it once a permit is pulled for site development.
Even if the argument is that, that the traffic is going to be going north, they still have to improve it?
That is correct. The whole frontage along Crown Avenue is unimproved, so they'll need to improve this frontage according to the city engineer's requirements.
And I assume you sent out notices to those people who all live in that R12. Did anyone reply?
I have not heard anything.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Woody?
Mike, when we have a C-17, we're moving it from C-17L to C-17, but there's single-family homes. Is that the normal, there's no, what's the word I'm looking for? Buffering, buffering that?
Usually on a C-17, if you have adjacent properties that are not buffered or by a street, so this is like across the street, so there is a transition area from C-17 across the street that's not directly abutting residential properties by property lines.
Okay, so if you want a single-family home, you want to live across the street from commercial, kind of?
That's correct.
That's the buffer. Okay.
And C-17 does allow for residential uses, so they could do multifamily there if they would like.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? All right. Thank you, Mike. We will open up the public testimony portion of this, and the applicant, Drew Dittman. Do we have Drew Dittman, Renata, on, or Brandon online?
Brandon, do you have Drew Dittman on as an attendee?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
We can.
Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue, in the great city of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
Drew, just a, just a second here, Drew. Renata?
Yes.
Is there, is there any swearing in, or how do you do that stuff?
No, it's a legislative one, so you're good.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mike had indicated, we're looking to change the zoning on approximately six acres from C-17L to C-17. I don't know if I have the ability to share my screen or not, but it, it's the property located just north of the intersection of Kathleen and Highway 95, formerly the site of, Blue Dog RV was there for a while. There were several auto dealerships that have been there throughout. Nissan has recently bought the property and is looking to expand their, their dealership. And, there we go, I can share my screen now, I think. Can you guys see that now?
Yes, we can.
So, this is the same, thank you, this is the same map that Mike had in his staff report. You can see the subject property here. I've got hatched it in red, adjacent to Highway 95 again. It's just north of Super 1 Foods there on Crown Avenue. It's got C-17 to the north, C-17L, and C-17 to the south, the R12, as was noted, to the east, and C-17 across Highway 95. It's part of the Highway 95 corridor according to your comp plan, which, as you know, is primarily commercial C-17 along there, hence the reason, part of the reason we're asking for the C-17 designation. Mike had gone through the four findings, B8 through B11, that are required to make this decision, so I won't go through those. I'll touch on, on a few things. It was discussed in the planning and zoning meeting, why go through a zone change versus applying for a special use permit? And we, we went kind of back and forth on that a little bit. Our thought, or Coeur d'Alene Nissan's thought, was the, the auto dealership sales is obviously an outright allowed use in the C-17 zone. If we went through a special use permit, they're tied down to that specific use, and if they ever wanted. if they ever wanted to expand or to do anything with the dealership, they'd have to come back to council, come back to the city to get another special use permit. So it seemed to fit with the zone change request, and again, the property to the north, kind of that auto dealer row, if you will, as you go down 95 to the north, you've got several auto dealerships there. And so it seemed to fit with that scheme. And it's surrounded mostly by commercial uses, with the exception of, as council member McEvers had pointed out, you do have some of that R-12 residential product to the east. Staff has reviewed this, and there really weren't any concerns. Traffic was discussed, and Mike had touched on that a little bit. We will be required to upgrade Crown Avenue to meet current city standards. We understand that, and we do acknowledge that. There's some conditions in the findings in your staff report and your packet, and I don't think we take exception to any of those. So with that, I think I would stand for any questions.
Council questions for Mr. Dittman. I don't see any, Drew, questions at this time. May bring you back, but we'll see how that goes. Do you think whoever originally developed that enjoyed whiskey? Since you have Crown, and rye, and bourbon, and royal.
It was out of the county in those days, right?
Was he a whiskey fan of this? Yes. So, anyone else, Renata, on that would like to give public testimony?
I don't see anybody waving their hand yet.
Okay, so we will close the public testimony portion of that, and look for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 201007, once by title only.
Sorry, Woody, to interrupt, the first action item is whether you approve or deny the zone change request.
The top of the page there, Woody.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'd like to move to approve ZZ-2-19, proposed zone change ZZ-120, requested zone change from C-17L to C-17 at 403 North Crown Avenue, and to adopt the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Dan, is it okay for us to adopt the findings as opposed to directing staff to making the findings? There's a question for staff.
Yeah, you can adopt their findings. The Drew or Mr. Dittman mentioned some conditions. I don't see the conditions on here, but if that would be something you would include with the motion.
Was that something, Dan, that you'd like to see different?
It's just Woody did not read the motion as it was written, and I just want to make sure that we're kosher moving forward.
Well, or you can make the findings or use the planning and zoning's findings. They've already done the work, in my mind, unless there's something you guys want to add to it, you know?
No, we're good.
Mr. Mayor, and I'm looking at the minutes from the P&amp;Z meeting, and I'm not seeing any conditions listed. Am I missing them? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see any, so I don't know if there were conditions. Mike Behary may be able to clarify whether there were conditions that want to be adopted by council.
There are no conditions with this zone change request.
Okay. Any further discussion on that item? Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yeah.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, we want to go on to the Council Bill Number 20-1007 approving, this is kind of confusing for me, but, requested zone change from C-17L to C-174301 North Crown Avenue. Now, we want to dispense with the rules, right, Renata? It's getting late.
I'll move to dispense with the rule and read the Council Bill 201007, once by title only.
Second.
Motion in a second. Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill 20-1007, an ordinance amending the zoning act of the city of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, known as Ordinance Number 1691. Ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene by changing the following described property from C-17L to C-17. Said property being described as followed. To wit, plus or minus 6.2 acre portion of a parcel located at 4301 North Crown Avenue. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith. Providing a severability clause. Provide for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yeah.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to adopt Council Bill 201007.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? One more roll call, please, Renata.
Miller.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. On to our final piece of business tonight. This is legislative hearing, vacation of Lilac Lane Right-of-Way located in the final plat of Foss Edition. And Dennis Grant is our closer tonight. Dennis?
Greetings, Mayor and Council. Dennis Grant here. Can you hear me and see the picture?
Loud and clear.
Excellent. Okay, let me get the view here, correct. Full screen. Okay, there we go. All right, so the applicant, Lilac Glen LLC, is requesting the vacation of Right-of-Way located in the final plat of Foss Edition. It's shown there on your screen, and the general location is east of I-90 and approximately 800 feet north of Sherman Avenue. The requested right-of-way was originally dedicated to the city of Coeur d'Alene in the Foss Edition plat in 1957. The purpose of this request is to vacate Lilac Lane in the Foss Edition. And in a nutshell, to make it real simple, in the staff report, I go into a little bit more specifics, but in a nutshell, what's going to happen is we're going to, what we're going to do tonight is vacate Lilac Lane, as shown, and then there's going to be a subdivision called Lilac Glen coming in to you in the future here, probably in the next month or so, and give us the right-of-way back in a slightly different configuration. So that's the big picture for you. And then the recommendation is, city council should approve the vacation action per Idaho Code 50-1306, and to vacate the property to the applicant, Lilac Glen LLC. And we did have, I sent out six certified mailings to the surrounding property owners. I did receive one back, and they were neutral. I did get a phone call from Lake Villa Apartments from John Barlow, and he wanted to make sure that the northerly entrance to Lake Villa off of Lilac Lane would not be affected by this vacation, and I assured him that it would not. Lilac Lane, from the entrance to Sherman Avenue, will remain as is, and that's what I explained to him. And that's all I have for you.
Council questions for Dennis? Woody.
A couple, Dan. So when I first saw this, I thought, oh, wow, it's going to be private, they're just going to cut it off, but that's not going to happen, correct?
Right, yep, that's correct. So, I know it's a little confusing in my staff report because I went into a lot of specifics there, but yeah, that's why I wanted to give you the big picture. We're removing Lilac Lane, but getting it back through the subdivision process, and it'll go all the way through to Pennsylvania.
Because there is a development going on back up there, right? And this is one of the ingress egresses?
That's correct. And so what happened was, we found out, per state code, you can add right-of-way in a subdivision, but you can't take it away. So therefore, we had to get this step accomplished before they could come in to get approval at city council for their subdivision.
So I have to confess, I probably shouldn't vote on this, because in 1977, my folks lived at the end of Lilac Lane, and we picked lilacs, and they're beautiful right now, and it was before Sin City, I mean, the apartments, back when the sourdough was down there, and it's like, it's all changed, the house is gone, and it was like, I lived there a long time.
Creating a conflict.
Almost free.
Creating a conflict for you.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to let go of it, and it's very difficult, but now that we're getting it back, I think I'm okay.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Kiki.
Is there any possibility or intent on this development to have it become a gated community? By vacating this?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
You don't believe so?
No, there's no gated community.
Okay. I'm just wondering about, when you talk about the timing of vacating this piece of it, and then it's going to come back as a subdivision, once you already have given the road away, you've given the road away.
Well, the road is already in. There's asphalt and curb, it's already the shape that it's going to be, it's just, we need to do this process first.
Right, so the other end of the road, is that owned by the city now?
Pennsylvania is, yep, and I don't know the south end, who owns that.
So vacating this piece will pull it through, from Sherman Avenue to Pennsylvania, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so the road that they've built, that the Lilac Glen Group has built right now, is owned by the Lilac Glen Group?
No, it'll be dedicated to the city of Coeur d'Alene on the, when you approve the plat coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dennis? All right, we will open up the public testimony portion of this. I do have one person that has signed on the list here. Suzanne Metzger is in favor of the project. Brandon, do we have anyone on that wishes to give any public testimony?
If I may speak?
Yes, go right ahead. Your name and the address for the record, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Suzanne Metzger. My address, for the record, is, for this purpose, 243 West Sunset Avenue. I'm actually one of the managers of Lilac Glen LLC, and I wish to speak on behalf as one of the managers of the LLC. It is our intent to create a gated community, and that the subdivision is, the PUD is currently created as duplexes, duplex lots, and the layout, we were looking at a small grassy area at the one end by 23rd and Pennsylvania, and then actually up above, at the upper region, as potentially a large area, possibly for a assisted living facility. And that's done for, actually, for something that's very close to our hearts right now. And that, but we are very close to being done, and that, and very close to, hopefully we'll be back to the council in the next month, end of June, early July, hopefully, with all, everything else be done. And that, so if there are any questions on particulars, we're happy to answer them for you.
I guess I did have a question for Dennis, because Kiki's question was whether it was going to be a gated community, and we had heard no, that it wasn't going to be, and now Suzanne had just told me, told us, that it was a gated community, so I think we probably need to get that clarified. Is that right, Kiki? Your question was that, was it a gated community? Initially, we had heard from Dennis that no, it wasn't, and now we're...
No, no, not a gated community at all.
Okay, not a gated community, okay, so I just missed it.
No, sir, not a gated community whatsoever.
Okay, all right. All right, Woody.
One more question. Are you going to keep the name?
Yes, Lilac Lane.
What was that?
Yeah, Lilac, Lilac Glen, and then Lilac Glen.
Okay. I can go smell it, anyway.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone, anyone else wishing to testify? Brandon, anyone else on the line? No? Okay, so I will close the public testimony portion of that, and look for council action.
I would make a motion to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 20-1008, once by title only.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill 20-1008, an ordinance of the city of Coeur d'Alene, vacating Lilac Lane Right-of-Way, generally described as a parcel of land located in the final plat of Foss Edition in the city of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith. Providing a severability clause, and providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yeah.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
One more piece of business there.
Make a motion to adopt Council Bill Number 20-1008. Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yeah.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Should we adjourn? All those in favor? Would there dare be anybody opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.